Considering consideration of installing a rainbow crosswalk.
Item nine, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, nine, sorry. Item nine, consideration of installing a rainbow crosswalk or intersection on city streets and other alternatives. So we will get a staff report on the consideration of this. Roger, are you doing this or Chad?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be I'll be giving the presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry, David, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, David Stillman, the Transportation Manager. Let me pull up a presentation I have for you this evening. Okay, can everybody see the presentation?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you, right, again, good evening. Tonight, I'm here to follow up on a request that was made of staff at the July 21 city council meeting to investigate the potential of installing rainbow colored crosswalk treatments at locations within the city. I'll start off showing some examples of some rainbow colored crosswalks throughout the country. Configurations, as you can see, limited only by the imagination. One common theme with all of these crosswalks is that the colors are contained within the white longitudinal crosswalk stripes. The width between the stripes is generally 10 feet, but could be more. Here's an example of a location where the entire intersection is striped in a rainbow mural. With regards to potential locations within the travelway for a rainbow installation, Cupertino streets are classified into three general categories. Arterials such as Stevens Creek Boulevard, Indiana Boulevard, which are higher volume and speed streets. Collectors such as Stelling and McCallum, which provide access to the arterials and have moderate speeds and volumes. And local streets, which are generally residential and have lower speeds and volumes. The photo on the left shows an arterial intersection, this one Stevens Creek at Finch. This location was proposed by members of the community for a rainbow crosswalk installation. However, speeds and volumes are relatively high at this location. On the right is an example of a local street intersection, Torrey and Town Center Lane by City Hall. Due to the lower speeds at this location, this could be a good alternative if council wishes to proceed with a rainbow crossing street treatment. This location has the additional advantage of being proximate to popular city facilities like City Hall and the library. With respect to regulations, the Federal Highway Administration establishes the standards which regulate signing and striping on streets and highways. They specifically addressed the issues of multicolored pavement treatments. Summarizing their position, they state that no colored pavement should be used between the crosswalk lines that degrades the contrast of the crosswalk lines, basically meaning vibrant and reflective colors, but that earth tones such as terracotta brick patterns are acceptable. So I'm going to share with you next some other alternatives which could be considered that are outside of the street travelway and therefore not in violation of FHWA standards. Coloring the sidewalk at a street corner such as this one at Stevens Creek and Finch is one alternative, as is a decorative street name sign such as the one shown here from Philadelphia that maintains the required standard background color for street name signs of green, blue, or brown. Some other alternatives include painting the tips of median islands and enhancement of the area contained within the contained and protected within a bulb out. The intersection of Finch and Caido Barcelona shown there on the right is one candidate location. At the bottom is an example of a colored pavement area protected by a bulb out. This one's located in Baltimore. Finally, areas within the Civic Center Plaza or the parking area could be enhanced. All these alternatives do not involve application on the street of rainbow colors that could interfere with traffic control devices. Staff's recommendation is to consider public areas that are not within the vehicle travel areas on public streets, such as plazas, parking lots, sidewalks, medians, or street name signs, or street areas not used by vehicles and bikes. We do not recommend application within vehicle travel areas on public streets. Costs depend wildly on the size, scope, and the type of application, as you can imagine. Areas outside of the street travel way could cost from $500 to $5,000 or more. Crosswalks and pavement murals could cost over $20,000. Street name signs would be about $200 each. Installation of surface treatments on the street would include a preformed thermoplastic material that lasts about eight to 10 years. Paint, while considerably less expensive, would require replacement every two years due to the consistent wear of vehicles. These same surface treatments can also be applied to sidewalks and parking lots at public facilities. And the cost to install these alternatives are shown on this slide. And finally, the cost to implement rainbow colored treatments could be included in projects that are already budgeted. Returning to council for designer budget would not be needed. So with that, I conclude my report on rainbow crosswalk installations. Thank you very much, and I'm open for questions.
You're on mute, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so, um, thank you, David. I, um, so I had some comments. I contacted Assembly Member Evan Low after the last discussion of this, and I received an answer regarding the legality. And, uh, and I quote in his response, "No element of the aesthetic interior treatment can implement pictographs, symbols, or multiple color arrangements." So I know, David, you said things with earth tones are okay, and we already actually do have some crosswalks in the city that use like brick pavers that are kind of reddish. But it's not a multiple color arrangement. But he also said in, in, um, in the response, there are, there are instances where local regions do not adhere to the MUTCD manual at the risk of assuming liability or forfeiting funding. So, you know, I know it violates the municipal, the manual, manual on traffic control devices if we do it. But as you pointed out, other cities actually have decided to violate the manual and go ahead anyway. And I did receive today, I received, you showed the one in West Hollywood, and there was a new, there was a story about this in one of the online newspapers, Patch. And it said, "Since the temporary installation, the crosswalks have not only gained tremendous positive attention from around the world, but not a day goes by when we don't see hordes of tour buses slowing down to snap photos of the new landmark." And I think that probably goes to the reason that the highway administration, you know, prohibits this kind of thing because they didn't, they don't want to create something in the road that creates all this attention by, by drivers. So I appreciate the alternatives that you've proposed. You know, personally, I like the idea of the sidewalks approaching, um, you know, around Stevens Creek. If I can, let me see if I can share my screen. Okay, where did that go? Sorry, yeah, oh, here it is, okay. Right, so in talking to Roger and, you know, you know, how much would this cost? I thought we could, you know, scrape the concrete, add colored concrete. He said, "No, you want to use the thermoplastic instead, it lasts longer." And that's another thing, the thermoplastic on the sidewalks, you wouldn't have to keep repainting it like you would have to do in a, in a, in a painted crosswalk. We changed the yellow, the yellow here to multiple colors. And by the way, why are there no white stripes on the outside of this crosswalk? That, that, are they supposed to be there or, or not? David?
Uh, no, they, they do not necessarily have to be there. So there's, there's several ways that you can delineate a crosswalk. First and foremost, it has to be one of the, according to the FHWA, one of the standard colors of, of yellow. If it's, if it's a school crossing or white, if it's, if it's not a school crossing. There are different configurations of stripes that are allowed. The old standard is the longitudinal white stripes or wider yellow stripes across the roadway. And then more recently, what you see there at Finch and Stevens Creek Boulevard with those kind of fatter lines that are in the direction of travel are also allowed, as are diagonal stripes of wider yellow, because the ones that you showed are more visible generally to motorists.
All right, so if there's any more questions from council before we go to the public for comment? Does anyone else have any questions before we go to the public? Okay, seeing none, we will move to public comment. I have three hands raised, first is Drew Lloyd, four hands, welcome Drew. Are you there, Drew?
Mr. Mayor, are you there?
Yeah, we're here, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the Cupertino City Council. I'm Drew Lloyd, and I'm the President of the BayMEC, the Bay Area Municipal Elections Committee. As many of you are aware, BayMEC is Silicon Valley's oldest and largest LGBTQ issues oriented human rights organization and political action committee founded 36 years ago in 1984. BayMEC has played an instrumental role in making our community a more inclusive and welcoming one. I'm here tonight along with my colleagues and fellow board members, Rich Poppin and Pat Tejans, to show our strong support for the installation of the rainbow crosswalk. We'd like to show some examples of a couple of painted rainbow crosswalks in San Jose that have been in place for about four years. And this one here is the rainbow crosswalk near the Billy De Frank LGBTQ Community Center on the Alameda in the city of San Jose. This is a major street, not unlike Stevens Creek Boulevard. It is extremely visible, and I drive past it every day. And there have been no issues with that in the city of San Jose. Madam Clerk, if we could show that next photograph, the Meredith Crosswalk PDF? Thank you, that is another one that was done in the Willow Glen area downtown. That, again, also approved, it does not conflict with any Rhone signage. If we could go back to the Alameda Crosswalk, Madam Clerk? Thank you. BayMEC specifically wants to strongly support the installation of a crosswalk like this one at Finch Avenue and crossing over Stevens Creek Boulevard to Cupertino Main Street. This intersection is located closely to Cupertino High School. This location is strongly supported by LGBTQ students and their allies. And this crosswalk will act as a beacon of hope to many students attending the school. I would hope that the city of Cupertino and its council would send a message of support to LGBTQ people and especially to kids coming to terms with themselves at this critical point in their lives, when even a little support can go a long way. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted.
Sorry, welcome, Pat.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I am also, and also to all the council members there. I'm also colleagues with, with Drew here from the BayMEC organization. And I'm speaking actually as a native San Josean who came out as a lesbian while I was a student at Leland High School in the year 1997. I'm aging myself a bit here. I grew up in a residential suburban neighborhood, and I felt quite isolated as I came to terms with my sexuality. But I managed to find support and ground myself as a young adult. And looking back, I clearly remember just how much it meant to me to, just to see a rainbow flag and know that I was in a safe space. I know that, you know, there are many pressing issues before the council, and this can, you know, perhaps it seems like just a small thing, but I just wanted to speak personally to how much of a difference this can make in a young person's life. The rainbow flag dates back to 1978. It's a symbol of inclusion and celebration of our diversity. And it also sends a message to broader society that this community is supportive and does not condone bullying or discrimination. I think it can be hard for adults to remember sometimes what it's like to be a teenager and how it can be, you know, it can be challenging to reach our young people during their teenage years. But I, I also strongly believe that a rainbow crossing at Finch Avenue and Stevens Creek Boulevard would send a very positive message, not just to broader society, but especially to the high school kids. I can imagine myself walking across the street there. And, you know, I, I, I hope that you will look more closely at the safety issues. I actually just read a New York Times article that says there was no evidence of, of issues of danger. So obviously, I can't speak to that as just a resident, but I hope that if that is the concern, you'll look more closely at that before making a decision against it for those reasons.
Okay, thank you. Next, Lisa Warren, welcome, Lisa.
Okay, thank you. So this may not be popular for the people that are still awake watching this, but I, I'm not opposed to something to symbolize support. What I don't understand is if it's, that's the goal, why is it directed only in just what I just heard and what I've kind of gathered from the past to high school students? I mean, there's, there's LGBTQ people of all ages. I don't, I see this being something more appropriate, if at all, to be done in city center, not in one end of the city by one school. And I, I believe that initial request was to go across Finch, not across Stevens Creek Boulevard. You know, there's, and personally, you just spent quite a bit of time speaking about people following the rules for short term rentals and to knowingly violate some rules that could create problems doesn't make sense to me. Some people have been talking, and I think it's a better idea is to find a place where colored, rainbow colored lights could be displayed. Perhaps at Cali Mill is what I think is the best location because it's the center of the city. The lights are visible, far more visible than a crosswalk if you're not driving over the crosswalk. I just think there's other things that should be discussed to reach the same goal than this very narrowed in sort of idea. I mean, I don't know if I explained that well enough, but hopefully I did.
Okay, thank you, Lisa, and I'll point out that if, if you saw the staff report, they did suggest several other options that were legal. Next is Jasmine, welcome Jasmine.
Hello, hello, this is Justin.
Oh, I'm sorry, it shows up as Jasmine Wang, okay, go ahead.
Oh, that's weird, okay, well, I'm Justin, hello, City Council. I am a member of Cupertino students, Cupertino advocates, of young, Cupertino Association of Young LGBTQ plus Advocates. At first, I just wanted to point out that I'm very honored that the BayMEC representatives came to defend the rainbow crosswalk that we and other organizations have proposed. So to first respond to the other comments that we heard today, the original proposition is to paint the rainbow crosswalk at Stevens Creek. And the reason we are, we wanted that is because that the Cupertino students have been perhaps the most vocal group in advocating for this crosswalk. And also in addition, we believe this is a sign of progress. And a lot of times, the high school students and the young people really are the people that we want to protect the most as they're, you know, the future of our city. And a lot of the young people, they're more confused about the problems going on in our city, whether or not we are, we are inclusive of them or there are now we're antagonistic towards them, whether or not we are willing to see them as valid, right? So in the end, I just want to reiterate that it will be very important for us if the, whatever project that we ended up on decide to install, that it will be very visible to our young people in the city. And just further on, regarding legality and safety, I do believe that a lot of this should be inspected closely, more closely. As we have seen the, in the law, they have specified that retro reflective painting is the defining factor on whether or not the, wherever we install will be distracting, and I think there's a lot easier, easy ways to circumvent that. So yes, I hope the City Council will decide on a very visible installation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. David, I mean, what I read in the manual on uniform traffic control devices, first it said retro reflect, non retro reflective colors could be used, but then it goes on and says, but you can't have multi color arrangements. So what is, you know, can you elaborate further on that?
Yeah, my, my interpretation of, of what the FHWA ruling states is that any, any colors that are not the earth tone colors and there, and there's a ruling where they specifically state relation to earth tone colors, any, any colors that are not earth tone colors are not allowed to be used, and there are specific other colors that are only allowed to be used in the streets, which are the white, yellow, green for bike lanes, and red for, for bus areas. Those colors can only be used for those purposes, anything else has to be a non reflective earth tone.
Right, I mean, that, that's what I got from Assembly Member Low as well. Okay, next we have JR Fru, and welcome, JR.
Good evening, thank you for taking up this item. I'd just like to call attention of council to one of the items in the staff report, which was a, an image of a rainbow crosswalk that was in Traverse, Michigan, which may solve part of your problem because the coloration is entirely outside of the retro reflective portions of the crosswalk. It may actually address your concerns in terms of what the MUTCD guidelines require. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Sophie, welcome Sophie.
Hi there, my name is Sophie, and I'm a longtime resident of Cupertino. I grew up here and attended K through 12 in Cupertino, still live in the area. I strongly urge all of you to support the rainbow crosswalk for its high visibility and its message of diversity and inclusion. Growing up as a queer Asian American in Cupertino and being an active officer in Cupertino High School reliance when I was in school, I really think there, it could, yeah, to echo what people have said earlier, it can be really tough to be a teen who's figuring yourself out, or it doesn't even matter what age you are, like, people discover their gender and sexuality can change over the years. And I think it's really important that we as a city show support in small and big ways, including through, you know, usage of the rainbow flag and rainbow symbol. I personally advocate for it to be placed by the City Hall and Library, where I think more people of all backgrounds are more likely to see it. And it's also a less trafficked area, which might help mitigate some of the concerns about safety. Regarding safety, I think we should prioritize recent studies, which do demonstrate that it hasn't had much of an impact and recognize that rules are also subject to change. I don't think we should just blindly follow what is set out, and, you know, we should also look at the evidence and studies being done on its safety. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, I don't see any other hands raised right now, so we will take it back to council. So who would like to, who would like to go first on this? Before I call on someone, if no one volunteers, okay, let's go to John first.
Okay, yeah. So I, I do think it's really important to the community, to me, that our community is seen as being all inclusive. I think our, our strong point is that our community comes from every continent on this, on this planet. We're, we're here from everywhere, and we need to embrace everybody, we're all just people. So, okay, embrace everybody, welcome everybody. But I think it does go a long way when we're able to actually have some type of symbol that, you know, clearly says, they, they don't have to go to somebody and ask, but they can see that this is an inclusive community, a place that's welcoming. So, okay, how can we, how can we kind of communicate that well? Rainbow crosswalk is one way. I was glad to see the, the real life examples that I think Drew showed of San Jose. And I think it's a lot less concerning about safety when I see those real life ones. The ones that we, we saw, I think the mayor put up, they were actually had what I think are more vibrant colors, more likely to distract a driver. And when I see the ones that he showed us in San Jose and in Willow Glen, I don't get the feeling that that's going to be a heavy distraction. If it was next to the high school, the, the density of the walkers, the density of the bikers increases as it gets closer and closer to the school. And so when I was looking at the pictures that the mirror was providing and, you know, really capturing the eye, you know, and destruct, possibly being a distraction, it gives me some concern. We only need one student to be hit on a bicycle or as a pedestrian. But those pictures in San Jose where the colors, you know, the image is horizontal, we're not looking at it from an old, an aerial point, and so you don't get that brightness of these colors that's gonna, what is that? You know, and risk taking your eyes off, you know, the surroundings and the people and stuff. So I think it can be done. I think the examples in San Jose serve as a a way that it could be done in Cupertino. And I think either one across Stevens Creek or Finch would work with what we did see. I definitely am always an advocate of trial and such that if we were able to put out, you know, a removable one that, you know, water, watercolor that do it in the middle of summer. And if it did, did prove to be a distraction or something, then it could be removed. But then the permanent one could be put down, or maybe just do the permanent, and we know that it's gonna, if it did need to be moved or something else, it could still be done. But to me, I think it does send a important message, not just to those in our community, but in our surrounding communities, that you're welcome in Cupertino. Come, and you're welcome to be here. And so with that, I'll turn it over.
All right, thank you, John. Leon, would you like to go? You're muted, oh, there you go.
Okay, yeah, I think it's great idea that we can show we are supportive of people of all background gender. And I think this, that's, that's the goal. So I think eventually we have $200,000 for park fund for bench and other amenities for the park. We can even consider rainbow bench or other kind of symbols elsewhere. And as for, I think the goal is really I think the goal is really, we want people to feel we welcome them and we appreciate their presence. Whether it's a crosswalk or not, shouldn't be a big determining factor because looking at Cupertino High, not all the students come into Cupertino High through Stevens Creek. I think 50% of them probably come from south side of Cupertino High and they may not ever cross that walk. So I like the mayor's idea of stripes on those street corners because then we get to input that in street corners all around Cupertino High. That way students from different direction could all appreciate that this is a space for me. And then we can put that around the other street corners. And so that maybe students in Montavista High also can feel this is the school that welcomes me. So, and also I think, yeah, other people are doing rainbow crosswalk. Why do we have to follow what other people has done? Cupertino, we should set our own standard. Other people do crosswalk, we can do on street corners. And I like the mayor had this very bright colored stripes that can even last longer. That's set a new standard in Cupertino. And other people will say, hey, that's even better. Let's follow Cupertino. So, yeah.
All right, thank you. Let's see, Rod, you have your hand up. Go.
Yeah, I frankly don't think we need to make this so complicated. I, I I think we simply ought to honor the press, the advocates to install a new crosswalk at Finch, right? The one that isn't there that needs to be completed. And I, as JR said, I, I also looked at the Traverse thing and I said, you know, this is, this is a, it's, it's simple. It's not too big. My concern about doing it elsewhere is A, it's not what the advocates asked for. Or, you know, on the sidewalk and, and, you know, if you use enough color enough places, it could truly be distracting. So I think I, I like the Traverse pattern. I would build the crosswalk that's been designated in the bike plan on that what east side, I guess, of Finch going right across up to, to Main Street. And, and use the Traverse design out of the crosswalk. And, you know, I, I know that we all take risks in life and the city takes risks too. And if this isn't within the guidelines, I think we are in, in good company in expressing ourselves about our, our support for the community. We, yeah, we could do a lot of other things and we could study a lot more stuff and we could do other things, but that's not, that's not what the advocates have asked for. And I think we ought to just, I think we're making this too hard. Thanks.
Okay, Dorothy.
Thanks. So, you know, I, I prefer to do something that is not a public safety risk and also a liability issue, which has been very clearly described to us in our staff diligence. But if there's a majority of support for a crosswalk, yeah, I mean, of course I'll, I'll support. I, I echo the sentiments of every single person on council. And I think the vast majority of our community that we want to be very supportive of, of everyone in, in our community and be inclusive. I think that one of the comments that was very compelling, you know, to me at least, was pointing out that you know, this isn't really a central location in our city. You know, it's close to Cupertino High, but at the same time, we do have another high school within our borders. Two, in fact, but Homestead High, of course, is, is right on the border of Sunnyvale. Montavista, you know, is the other high school that is squarely, you know, within a very heavily Cupertino populated area. But the civic center is, you know, directly in the middle. As I, I think most people know, I've been a very strong advocate of think that if you were to look at the visibility of the library and the amount of people that it attracts, that would be a, a much broader cross section of the community. And so even though it wasn't specifically asked for by a particular advocate or even a couple or a handful, I, I think that, you know, good process does take into consideration the breadth of the, of the community. And I think it was an excellent comment pointing out that, you know, look, this is in the middle and, you know, as someone who is a strong supporter of, of our library, its services, its infrastructure in our community, I would be 100% in support of irrespective of what the mechanism is, even if it's a crosswalk, although I would say, you know, we really need to be assiduous about how we examine the, 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 the safety concerns. I, I think we can address those and, and satisfy them as well as not just be very successful in addressing the, the very real concerns that are are being placed at, you know, at our hands here. But also have some value add in the conversation. I, I wouldn't mind having a a more detailed conversation with various parts of our community to see what would be, you know, what the ideas would be that are out there. I, I think, you know, not to, not to prolong the process, but but, but to come out with more possibilities that might in fact be, you know, just wildly, wildly popular and, and raise that awareness. So, you know, when I think about the civic center, I think about just a, a straight right through, you know, every every constituency of our community, cross section of, of people that attend. And I think that I, I think that that may be a better placement, but you know, of course, without you know, further conversation on it, this being the first time we've agendized it, we, we wouldn't really you know, have that, that, that kind of, that kind of input. But i- in terms of trying to influence people, not just on a broad scale, but given the fact that, you know, the library and civic center is where so many of our student population go to, you know, interact as well as, you know, get the library materials. I, I think it would really be an appropriate place to, you know, kind of make those, make those types of statements and, and to plant a seed for, you know, for tolerance and, and you know, convey that kind of message of inclusivity. And so, you know, I, I, I think about the, the statue outside the library made of bronze, you know, you have children playing, you know, with various animals. And, you know, I, I also think of the sculpture on the Apple Park campus, which is, you know, rapidly becoming, you know, quite iconic. It, it was at the end of you know, Apples unveiled today in the video. And, and I, I know, and I wonder whether, you know, that kind of accessibility could be put forward in our community through something very similar that, that you could, you know, go to and not just, not just, you know, have as a crosswalk or walk on, but, but really observe as, as, as public art, you know, and I think that you know, if we put really a lot of thought into it and outreach and engaged and have this, you know, very very clear consciousness, you know, I, I won't say raising or elevating, but, but perpetuating, I think, you know, in, in terms of where we're at in this overall conversation, it's been quite an arc over the last decade. When, when I ran in 2009, you know, it, it was, it was a major, it was a major issue legislatively. And, you know, I, I, I made a very clear public statement through, through that, you know, saying that, you know, I think personally, you know, I, I have no right to tell other people who, who they can and, you know, should love. I mean, that, that's just something that you know, at the time was still, you know, universally appreciated and recognized, but I think that this gives us a real opportunity to, to perpetuate the message and, and go along the dark. So, so I'll just wrap up by saying that if there is majority support for a rainbow crosswalk in, in any of the iterations that we've seen here, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll support as well, but I think there's an opportunity here to do something you know, even more meaningful and deliberative and thereby more significant and far reaching.
So Darcy, what about having like the Fine Arts Commission look into what would be appropriate to do? Hopefully finding something legal, hopefully that would be, you know, and, and I know Rod said, well, that's not what the advocates asked for. Well, that's true. And, you know, I've only been here three and a half years, but I've been asked in, by various people to do a lot of things that unfortunately we are not permitted to do. And, you know, we don't do them because we're not allowed to. So I'm not sure that something to find art, you know, a statue or whatever, or sidewalk treatment. I mean, I would love to do something that, you know, was meaningful and that didn't expose the city to any liability. And, you know, maybe the city attorney can weigh in on what the liability is when we violate the manual on universal on uniform traffic control devices. I know if, long before I ever dreamed of running, my first experience at a city council meeting was regarding the manual on uniform traffic control devices and you know, and the city saying, we can't, we can't keep these automatic gates in, they don't comply. And I was very disappointed with it. But, you know, I accepted the fact that, you know, that they had to follow that law. So I, I don't know what other people think about involving the Fine Arts Commission in, in something like this and finding something. I, I do like what the other speaker said that it might be more appropriate to have it at the city center where, where more people would, um, would see it, you know, or we could do both. We could do sidewalk treatments by the high school and we could do something at the city center. You know, I, I do feel strongly about this. You know, I haven't really shared this. I do have one child that is LGBTQ plus. And so I feel, you know, I feel pretty strongly that we, that we should show our support that Cupertino is very inclusionary. So I don't know what other people think about Fine Arts Commission weighing in on this.
I'm sure the Fine Arts because they meet like four times a year. So I think
They could have special meetings.
We probably need a special committee on this. And I do think not like we are not doing what the advocate is asking for. It's we are trying to do better. We are trying to do something that's even more meaningful and more feasible. More visible by more Cupertino residents and more high school students will be included in this acceptance of Cupertino. I think that's what Darcy was trying to say. Yeah.
And I would just maybe a little bit of caution that, you know, if it goes to the Fine Arts Commission, it should not be a traffic control device. Cause that's not in their scope, right?
Right, yeah.
Something entirely different.
Well, I mean, we don't even have a commit. If we had had the Transportation Commission, it would have been in their scope, but we didn't, don't have that.
You could, you could make a subcommittee of multiple commissions. I mean,
Yeah. Just create a subcommittee. I'm not sure if Fine Arts knows enough or interested enough on this issue, right?
Yeah, my, my comment, you know,
And Fine Arts?
It could be teen commission too, you know?
Oh, true, teen commission too. Yeah.
But I, I think, I think the, the main point of of either the teen commission, the fine arts, it really needs to be, you know, including and, and really supported by the LGBTQ community. I mean, for us to send it off to the Fine Arts Committee or something else, wait a minute, we're taking the boat and steering it conceivably in a different direction. You know, they've come and told us what they feel would be the appropriate one. And I think at this point in time, that's first and foremost. And if we put out these additional options and say, if you guys were wanting to do something else, we're supportive of the Fine Arts Commission or the Teen Commission or something else, but I, I would caution us steering away from our community that has asked us for something you know, well defined on their part. And I think we should, should be listening.
Okay, thank you, John.
I completely agree with John on that point. I mean, we can shuttle this around and delay and delay, but I think this is just not that hard.
Okay.
Can we make a motion then to have public works proceed? You know, we don't have a ordinance or a resolution for this one.
Right, right. This was to discuss this. But, right, it's not, not
To give direction.
It's to give direction, right?
Yeah, I also feel like giving to Fine Arts seems like delaying it. I think
Yeah, that's fine if
We need to make a decision on
You know, Darcy was talking about, you know, something more meaningful and I thought, you know, maybe fine arts could help with that, but I'm perfectly fine.
Council Subcommittee to talk more with staff and advocates and then maybe come back next, next meeting to have something. That's
I, I, I'm just gonna make a motion and then you can say yes or no. I, I'd move that we adopt in the crosswalk that we're missing there at Finch, I move that we paint a Traverse City like, make a Traverse City like crosswalk out of it and direct public works to, to, to figure it out. Right across Stevens Creek Boulevard.
Yeah, I'll second it. And, yeah.
All right, Kirsten, conduct a vote.
Councilmember Chow.
So I would rather to have a more citywide option that
We're voting on this now.
So I would vote no.
Councilmember Sinks.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Oh, yes. I
You are sharp.
Uh, well, I will go along with the majority of my colleagues and vote yes.
The motion carries with child voting now.
I have another motion I'd like to bring onto the table though. Can we form a task force to, you know, talk about a potential option in the future? Is, is that something that we can direct staff to go back to and give us some recommendations as to composition and, and outreach?
Yeah, I second that.
Yeah. So I, I'd like, I'd like to do that. I mean, I, like I said, you know, I was supportive of the crosswalk. But I think, you know, sincerely, you know, this is an opportunity here and
Look at other things, Vice Mayor, Mayor Paul.
Well, the first step is I, I'm asking you as a representative staff to go back and give us some suggestions as to what a task force would look like. You know, I, I appreciate the whole kind of ad hoc, you know, participatory fervor that we have, but I, I think also it's, it's very important for us to you know, adhere to our, 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 our assets and mechanisms that we have for reaching out to our community and, and, you know, evaluating these types of issues and really optimizing results. So, so yes, I've supported the crosswalk. Let's see what else we can do.
Okay.
What else can we do to really kind of optimize this opportunity?
So the action is for staff to go figure out what a task force might look at, to look at other things related to LGBTQ acceptance and diversity, inclusion across the city.
Exactly. And, and give us some recommendations with regard to how we go about comprising it.
Sure, got it.
Yeah, and I, I don't understand why this have to be a sidewalk. Why can we have like the straight sign? We can have a park bench, that's a rainbow park bench. In, so that we have these signals on
Okay, so the task force will look at that.
And Montavista High also needs some thing there too, right? So.
Okay, so motions on the table with a second. Can we call for?
Sure.
Excuse me, can, can you help me? Excuse me, can, can you, uh, help me with the motion again?
I'm asking, I'm asking for staff to go back and come back to us at a later date with regard to recommendations for the composition and purview of a task force uh, to study this, uh, issue of how we can, uh, further support, uh, the LGBTQ plus community. And, um,
Okay, so just so, just so I'm clear, we're gonna go forward with what we just voted on, on a four to one motion, I think, correct?
Yes.
And this is for, for showing additional signs of support to the community.
Or a sign, you know, it, it might, it might be, you know, just randomly, okay. It might be a rainbow in the middle of Memorial Park, right? The people who go to, or, you know, just
Sure. Yeah, yeah, okay. So, so fine, but I just, I'm just trying to make sure that we've given direction on the first thing and now we're talking about a yet, uh, more
We have, we have given direction.
Thank you.
Clarify this, are you
Thank you.
Of only the physical installation of this or also include other emotional support?
Uh, you know, truthfully, I was really looking at more of a deliverable that is tangible. Um, such as, you know, public art or, you know, uh, that, that was what I had envisioned, uh, when, when formulating this.
Right.
And, and I think, you know, we want to be able to keep it discreet as well, right?
More focused, yeah.
Okay, so Darcy, the motion, you made the motion, it's been second until, let's have a vote.
Councilmember Chow.
Yes.
Councilmember Sinks.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Sharp.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, okay.
Uh, pardon me, Mayor, I just have a quick, uh, clarifying question of the first motion that was passed. Now that there's one, uh, crosswalk that goes across Stevens Creek Boulevard now. And so just to be clear, the, the, the Traverse City like, um, display will be parallel to that crosswalk. There is currently not a crosswalk on the opposite side.
Correct, there is no crosswalk there now.
Isn't that part of the, uh, 2016 bike plan, a crosswalk on the east side of that intersection?
That's, that's what I'd like David just to clarify. I just want to make sure we're doing it
Yeah, I, yeah, exactly. I'm not trying to create a crosswalk if it's not in our plans.
Yeah, so could you speak to that, David?
Yeah, so it's, um, more specifically, it's part of the improvement that we're doing with the Stevens Creek Class Four Bike Lane Project. Part of the improvements with that project at, at Finch are to put a crosswalk on that east side, yes.
Okay, and that, and that, and that project is going to be starting soon. And so when it gets to the point where we're putting in that crosswalk, that, that's when we will do this work. So just as long as that's understood.
Can I clarify? So that's the kind of crosswalk that's more earth toned, right? It's not the reflective, very bright colored one.
No, it'll, it'll be a MUTCD crosswalk that he'll be putting in.
And, and just for clarification, we're doing the Traverse City style?
Yes. What is that? Can you show the picture again?
Uh, that, that was in attachment A of the staff report.
Yeah, we already voted on this. We need to move on.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are on to item 10, authorizing the sale and delivery of 2020A certificates of participation to refinance outstanding certificates of participation, 2012 refinancing project, 2012 certificates or refunded certificates for debt service savings and authorizing related documents and actions. So can we have a brief staff report?
So maybe let me try and take a cut at it, even though it's a little bit complicated. Um, and it needs a resolution. So this is basically a refinance. Um, it's all the same documents that, uh, has been done before in terms of refinancing, uh, the outstanding debt for Community Hall and the library. Um, and so with that said, I'm, I don't know that, uh, unless it's the amount, this council necessarily, I don't know if you want to discuss it, but I thought I would just try and put a button on it to try and save a little bit of time.
Right, I mean, we're basically lowering our interest rate, right?
Yeah, it's proving to, to save about two and a half million dollars over the next 10 years. Correct me if I'm wrong, Zach. There's nothing controversial about it. Or we could just proceed with the staff report. I didn't mean to put a wrench in anything either.
Right, is the staff person here?
Yeah.
Okay, proceed.
May, maybe we could just ask the council, if anyone on the council feels they need the staff report, you know?
Good idea. I, I do not need it. I would, you know, be ready to adopt the resolution right now.
Don't need it, but I'm sorry, I need to go back to the last item. I just saw the picture of the Traverse City Crosswalk.
Yeah.
That kind of crosswalk, I do
Leon, Leon, you're, yeah, we've already, already moved on from that item.
Wasn't shown to me. That, if it, we are talking about the Traverse City Crosswalk, that's like a vertical stripes. That's not a crosswalk. So this, I think we won't have too much, uh, liability. I do support that. So, anyway.
You want to, okay, look.
No, we're not going back to change votes now. Okay.
Yeah.
Um.
The picture wasn't shown to me.
Okay, thank you. We're on another item now. Please, please let us move on. We're already so late.
Okay.
So you were in the process of saying whether or not you wanted the staff report.
Right, I, I did not need it. Does someone else?
I do not need
I, I don't need it. And, and I would absolutely support getting a lower interest rate on any loan. Whether it be personal or
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so I'll, I will make a motion to adopt resolution number 20 dash 114 of the City Council, the City of Cupertino.
Could we clarify if there's public comment first?
Oh, shoot. Okay, yeah, you are right. Okay.
Um, I believe that, oh yes, there is one.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I apologize. We do have one person for public comment on this. Welcome, Ilango.
Yes, I'm Ilango Ganga. I'm speaking for myself. Um, I'm, uh, bringing up with one of the issues here. Um, public is also part of this city council meeting. And then, you know, the staff report is not only for the council members. Um, you agendized the item and you have listed down many of the, you know, supporting documents in there. And for the respect of the public, I think you should really present this. Um, and then take input from the public. Uh, whether public gives inputs or not, that's a different story. Um, and then go for the voting. Um, I know that you want to rush to, uh, you know, judgment and you wanted to, I know it's maybe a simple issue. But the item has been agendized, it's in order, and I wanted you to follow the process. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a member of the public that needs the staff report, so
Fair enough.
Um, proceed with the staff report. I mean, I would point out it's all also on the agenda on the website. Okay. Anyway, can we have the staff report?
Yeah. Zach, can you check your audio?
Yeah, we, Zach, we can't hear you.
Yeah, he's working on it. Did you see another raised hand, Mr. Mayor?
Muted.
You know, unmute yourselves.
Right, um, Kirsten, we'll take public comment after the staff report. And I, I did want to point out, you know, the procedure is the staff report, public comment, then the council deliberates. We don't go back to public comment afterwards. But it looks like we're not going to get a staff report.
Can we ask Deb to give?
Hey, can I confirm that you're able to hear me?
There you go.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, Zach.
I, I'd sure appreciate a brief staff report. The public and council members have, always have access to the, the packet, which contains all of the detail. Thank you.
Can I confirm that you're able to hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Perfect. I apologize for that. Let me share my screen. Presentation right up. Okay, is everybody able to view presentation mode?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so I will cover this briefly. Um, in collabora- collaboration with city staff, we have a financing team that comprises of Urban Futures, serving as the municipal advisor. Stradling, Yoka, Carlson and Roth as special counsel and disclosure counsel. Stiefel Nicholas and Company as the bond underwriter. Um, and as currently with the 2012 certificates of participation, as well as the proposed 2020 certificates of participation. The Bank of New York Mellon Trust, serving as a trustee and escrow bank. So currently the 2012 certificates of participation, they were originally issued at $43.9 million. There's a current outstanding balance of $27 million. The interest rates on those certificates range from 3% to 3.125% that are set to mature, uh, in July 1st of 2030. These became callable as of July 1st, 2020, and can currently be refunded. For the proposed 2020 Series A certificates of participation, this would be an issuance of $22.7 million in certificates. Um, and we're going to go into some of the, the preliminary estimated savings for the city. But this chart on the right showing this gray bar here is the prior debt service payments that the city is responsible for making. Um, subsidized by the general fund, approximately $3.2 million annually. With the, with the refinancing of the certificates of participation, we would be achieving, um, closer to $2.7, $2.8 million in annual debt service requirements. So as I mentioned, the estimated savings from a cash flow standpoint, we'd be looking at approximately $415,000 annually with a, uh, net present value savings of $2.26 million over the life of the certificates. Uh, that represents 8.3% of the total refunded par amount. And again, the savings are net of all costs of issuance and would benefit the general fund directly. As for the security of the certificates of participation, this would include lease premises of City Hall and its administrative offices, Community Hall or, um, Community Hall slash City Council chambers, as well as the Quinlan Community Center. As for the Public Facilities Corporation, um, subsequent, immediately subsequent to the city council meeting this evening, um, the city council will adjourn as the board of directors of the Public Facilities Corporation and convene and hold a meeting to approve, um, the corporation documents. And Public Facilities Corporation is a nonprofit public benefit corporation that was formed in 1986. And it was, the purpose of that corporation was to, um, assign authority to assist in the financing, the refinancing of construction of various capital improvements on behalf of the City of Cupertino. So the city, as well as the, excuse me, the city council, as well as the corporation actions for this evening would be to consider the adoption of the resolution to authorize the issuance of the 2020 Series A certificates of participation in an amount not to exceed $27 million. To also approve the financing team and approve the final form of the financing documents that are listed on this slide and attached to the agenda item itself. As for the financing schedule, uh, city staff, as well as the, the financing team as a whole, um, will be meeting with S and P Global Ratings and anticipate receiving the, the credit rating within the next week. Um, ultimately leading up to an anticipated bond issuance or closing, uh, closing date for the transaction either in the week of October 19th or October 26th. And with that, that will conclude the presentation and myself, as well as folks from our financing team are available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, thank you for stopping to share. Okay, so, um, we do have one person from the public who want, um, would like to speak on this. Welcome, Ilango.
Yes, this is Ilango. I'm speaking for myself. Um, I have one question regarding the interest rates, uh, for the new bond issues. How is it, uh, being, um, calculated? Is it, uh, based upon the market trend right now, or is it, uh, you know, could that be lower than, you know, what, what you have said, uh, what we're expecting right now?
Correct, that is based on, on current market estimates. Um, in the, the estimates that have been presented this evening and included in the staff report have incorporated a 50 basis point cushion to account for, um, any sensitivity in the market, um, or, um, further increase in current market, um, interest rates.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, that's all the public comment I have, so we can bring it back to the council. Um, Rod, did you want to speak?
I'd like to, I'm sorry, can, can I bring a motion?
Yeah, sure, make a motion.
I'd like to move the resolution, uh, 20 dash 114 of the city council of the City of Cupertino, authorizing the sale and delivery of 2020A certificates of participation in a principal amount not to exceed $27 million. Authorizing execution and delivery of certain documents relating thereto and directing certain actions in connection therewith. See it in my motion. I think staff can bring this forward. I don't think we can wait for the interest rates to lower because otherwise people would be paying us borrow money. I would really appreciate i- if we could vote on this after.
I, I will, I will second this. This is, uh, this is a no brainer. We've done this several times before in my tenure and and this is obviously all to the good for our, our city.
Okay, Kirsten.
Councilmember Chow.
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Sharp.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, now we're on to the presentation of the 2020 Blackberry Farm Entrance Road Improvements Feasibility Study Report and request that the city council endorse an alternative to improve pedestrian and bicycle access to Blackberry Farm, uh, for environmental review. Okay, welcome. Who is doing the staff report?
Uh, Mayor, it'll be Gail Seeds, our Park Restoration Manager.
Great, okay, welcome.
Can you see the screen, fun?
Okay. Uh, screen's up, looks good. Uh, good evening, Mayor Sharp, Vice Mayor Paul, council members and members of the community. I am Gail Seeds. I am the Park Restoration and Improvement Manager. Next slide. This evening, we are here to talk about, uh, I skipped ahead one too fast, Roger. Uh, the, uh, we're here to talk, uh, yes, next. We're here to talk about the Blackberry Farm Entrance Road Improvements Feasibility Study. This project was funded as a capital improvement project in the fiscal year 1920 Capital Improvement Program. It addresses the San Fernando Avenue entry to Blackberry Farm, which includes the pool complex, the group picnic grounds, Stevens Creek Trail and other popular amenities. The goal of the study was to look at alternatives to improve bicycle and pedestrian access to Blackberry Farm. And in doing so, it also identifies an associated land dedication at 10301 Burn Avenue that would allow such improvements to be implemented. Next slide. We are here tonight to present the results of the feasibility study, the public input and the findings. We will briefly present the five alternatives that are described in the feasibility study. We will share an overview of the results of the evaluation and the public input process. And we will illustrate the footprint for the recommended improvements that affects the frontage at 10301 Burn Avenue. Uh, that is the property at the northwest corner of Burn Avenue and San Fernando Avenue that was purchased by the city in 2018. Next slide. The only action before you tonight is to endorse a preferred alternative. No further project or action is proposed at this time, nor is proceeding with design or construction, nor any new funding. Endorsement of an alternative does not itself trigger review under CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. A CEQA review would occur in the future at such a time as the city council approves and funds a project to implement access improvements and the land dedication, uh, that uh, would be associated with that. Should the city initiate a project at 10301 Burn Avenue? Or should the city decide to sell the property or develop it, CEQA review would occur for those actions, including separating a portion of the land to be dedicated as public right of way. Uh, next slide. Uh, here are views of the existing conditions. The current access to Blackberry Farm for bikes, pedestrians and vehicles, uh, from the drive route off San Fernando Avenue is a narrow entrance road. It is shared by all three groups. This feasibility study identifies and evaluates five concepts to improve access for non vehicular visitors to the park. Next slide. Here we'll talk about what makes these alternatives different from each other. This is the first alternative, Alternative A. This one proposes a 10-foot wide ADA compliant pedestrian path on the north side of San Fernando Avenue. It's a dedicated separated pathway detached from the roadway, and it's located on the slope that is below the entry road into Blackberry Farm and above the golf course. And it shows on the left of this diagram. The entry road would be widened to 25 feet. On the entry road itself, there would be a 10-foot wide downhill lane that is shared by vehicles and bicycles on the golf course side. On the uphill side that's exiting Blackberry Farm, there would be a 10-foot wide vehicle lane for motor vehicles and a dedicated five-foot wide bike lane next to the existing stone wall. The approximate number of trees that would be removed in this alternative is 21. The thinking on this alternative is that the pathway will provide a safe detached route for pedestrians into and out of Blackberry Farm. For cyclists going downhill into Blackberry Farm is pretty easy since they can coast down the slope and they will be able to share the lane with vehicles. For cyclists that are exiting Blackberry Farm, they are climbing up the hill. So this alternative provides a dedicated bike lane for those cyclists that are exiting and making that uphill climb. That's on the right-hand side of this cross section. Next. This plan view shows where the pathway would be. That's kind of the lower shaded and hashed area, and it shows where the roadway widening would be needed above that along the edge of the existing entrance roadway. Next slide. Alternative B proposes, what alternative B does that's different from A is it takes that uphill bike lane on the rightmost side, and it moves the uphill bikes onto that dedicated pathway that's down the slope. So this alternative proposes a 14-foot wide pathway, again, on the north side of San Fernando Avenue and above the golf course that is detached. And on the, the eight-foot side of this pathway is dedicated to pedestrians, and there's a six-foot width available for cyclists making the uphill climb on this dedicated pathway. On the roadway itself, there would be 21-foot total width. There would be a 10-foot wide downhill lane that is shared by vehicles and cyclists, and there would be an 11-foot wide uphill lane for vehicles. The approximate number of trees that would be removed in this alternative is 15. Now, next slide. This is a plan view of that alternative. You can see that the separated pathway is wider and that there is a bit of roadway widening, particularly as you move towards Burn Avenue in this alternative. The next slide, you can move to the next slide, is a colored version that's a little easier to follow. This colored version shows the detached pathway in orange, and the parts at the uphill end and the downhill end that are solid orange are the ones that are at grade and on the ground. The kind of middle portion of the orange pathway that has the hashing on it is the part that is built like a boardwalk, and it is on posts, and it is separated from the hillside, and it's slightly elevated above the hillside. So it's a combination at-grade path and boardwalk path in all of the alternatives with this detached walkway. This one is the 14-foot wide alternative, as we noted previously. And in this diagram, the part that looks kind of bright purple is where the entrance road would need to be widened. So that shows where the widening is. There's the trees that would need to be removed potentially are shown with red Xs. And you can see in this one that the widening, the roadway widening in this alternative is fairly minimal. So this one, we thought, helped understand what is involved, and this is a good representation on top of the area. Thank you. Next slide, please. Alternative C is a lot like alternative A, except that the uphill bike lane is not along the rock wall going with the uphill vehicles. The uphill bike lane moves to the golf course edge of the entrance road, and it is on the very northerly edge of the entrance road. It is a dedicated five-foot wide uphill bike lane strictly for the cyclists going uphill. The downhill cyclists still share the downhill vehicle lane, and there's an uphill vehicle lane. Those vehicle lanes are each 10-foot wide. The total roadway width is 25 feet wide. And once again, we have a detached pathway. This pathway is 10-foot wide for two-way pedestrian use, just like alternative A. Thank you. Next slide. And this site plan shows that. You can see, if you remember the previous ones, that the roadway widening is wider here a little bit, and the pathway width is back to the 10-foot pathway that we saw in alternative A. Thank you. Next slide. Alternative D is quite a bit different. Alternative D does retain a 10-foot wide dedicated detached pedestrian pathway that's on that slope above the golf course and below the entrance road. But in this instance, we have a dedicated two-way bike lane, an uphill and a downhill bike lane that are each five foot wide that are dedicated for cyclists, and there is a single vehicle lane. That single vehicle lane is 12 feet wide, and it allows one-way traffic at a time. There would be a traffic signal at the uphill end of the hill and the downhill end of the hill, and vehicles would queue at the signals. If the oncoming traffic from the other direction is flowing, it would queue at a red light, and then the signals would switch once that traffic is cleared and allow one-way travel in the opposite direction for vehicles. This, the number of trees that would be impacted in this alternative is nine, estimated to be nine. And this alternative was explored partly in case it would provide cost savings because we'd have lighter duty paving for the bicycles over on the edge of the hillside, and maybe it might be less expensive. It turns out that the cost of installing the signals is high, and this alternative turned out to be the most expensive one. Okay, next slide, please. So this is the plan view of that alternative, and all of these things are in the report and in the packet. Next slide, please. Alternative E is the fifth and final alternative that was evaluated. In this one, the roadway becomes 30 feet wide. There are two 10-foot wide travel lanes for vehicles. The bicycles share those travel lanes, and on each side of the entrance road would be a five-foot wide dedicated sidewalk for pedestrians. So five foot on the uphill side, five foot on the downhill side, new, brand-new sidewalks. There is no detached walkway in this alternative because the pedestrians have sidewalks on both sides. And as noted, the cyclists and vehicles share the travel lanes. The number of trees affected in this alternative is estimated to be 29. This one has the highest tree loss. It has the biggest amount of widening. It does wind up involving a fairly tall retaining wall on the golf course edge. The construction is pretty difficult, and this is the second most expensive alternative. Next slide. This chart summarizes the evaluation results. It was provided in the staff report as the first page of Attachment B, and it was also in the study itself as page 14, the study itself as Attachment A. So this recaps the results of the factors that got evaluated. And overall, the conclusion was that Alternatives A and B ranked the most strongly overall. And those have those green circles showing you that the overall ranking was highest for those two. Next slide, please. The area of land that is currently part of the property at 10301 Burn Avenue, and that would be needed to construct the detached pathway and to conduct the road widening, that amount of space is identical in all of the options. It would involve dedicating a strip of land along the San Fernando frontage of that parcel that's about 1,960 square feet that would be dedicated as public right of way. The footprint of the dedication avoids impacts to the existing structures on the property, and the action would reduce the overall parcel size from 17,356 square feet to 15,396 square feet. The heavy red line kind of along the San Fernando frontage represents where the new property line would be, and it's just below that orange walkway route. Next slide. The public comment process, as we noted in the staff report, was involved holding a public meeting on February 12th at the Environmental Education Center at McClellan Ranch Preserve. The Bicycle Pedestrian Commission reviewed these alternatives in February, and the Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed the alternatives in March. Next slide. The comments were provided in the packet, the public, the comments from the public meeting on February 12th are provided in Attachment C of the study on pages 26 to 28. The comments in general that we heard was that B was the most popular by the attendees. A was the second most popular. And among the concerns that were expressed, people were concerned about loss of trees. They were concerned about impacts to the golf course and the third hole of the golf course. Pretty much, most people were very unexcited by alternative D with the signals, and there were questions about how much bicycle treatment we needed. Next slide. The commission input occurred in February and March. The Bicycle Commission weighed in on February 19th, and I'd like to make a correction now. The staff report noted that the BikePed Commissioners, that a majority preferred Alternative B. I'd like to clarify that they preferred a modified version of Alternative B. What the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission favored was leaving the roadway, the same is shown in Alternative B, but widening that detached pathway wide enough to accommodate downhill cyclists as well, and put the downhill cyclists off the roadway and onto the detached walkway. That would involve widening that walkway to somewhere between 18 and 20 feet. That alternative was not studied due to anticipated low use of the walkway by downhill cyclists. The cyclists can simply kind of coast down the hill. There are already speed bumps on that entrance road, as you've seen. Those are posted as five mile per hour speed, and the cyclists use that downhill access currently. There were some other factors. We believe there would be much higher tree impacts to that amount of widening, and it would be very difficult to avoid many of the trees, including some of the much larger, older trees. There's a higher cost for that alternative. And there are also questions about having cyclists going downhill on a separated path with railings at 8% slope and picking up a lot of speed. And on the ADA pathway, there are landings every 30 feet or less that flatten out. So the, that alternative was not recommended by the project team. Parks and Recreation Commission unanimously preferred Alternative B. Both commissions recommended that the city council accept this study. Next slide, please. Just to recap, this evening, we are seeking the council's endorsement of a preferred alternative. That is the only action we seek from you tonight. We don't propose a further project or action at this time. CEQA review and any subsequent improvements would occur at such time as the city council approves and funds a project to implement such improvements, or if the city council were to pursue developing or selling the property at the northwest corner of Burn and San Fernando at 10301 Burn Avenue. Next slide. That concludes our presentation. We would be very happy to answer any questions and provide any additional information that folks would like to hear about. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. So Rod, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I did want to clarify this. I had heard that the BikePed Commission had done, had recommended B, but now we hear it's an alternative. So I'd heard that from a couple of advocates that had written to us during this meeting. And, you know, that meeting was in February, and we chose not to study it. Can you explain why not?
I, perhaps I could get some assistance on that answer?
Yes, Rod. I think it's for the reasons that Gail had mentioned. It was going to significantly widen that separated path. It would, we just didn't see that it was practical, that you'd have downhill cyclists using that shared path, and then hitting those, hitting those landings was going to be problematic when the speed of the street is at five miles an hour, and they can, they can just simply go down the street.
Okay, but, but the recommendation they made was in February, right? Did we make any attempt to go back and explain the issues to them and, and sort of see if they were willing to gravitate to B or something else?
Yeah, I think David may be able to speak to that, but I'm, I'm not aware that we did.
It feels like there's some incomplete work here, right? Because if we're hearing that B seems to be everybody's favorite, but the BikePed Commission, who ought to be our experts on this, are recommending we do something else, it's a little challenging. Seven, eight months from their discussion about this, I guess.
Well, and I think the thing to note here is we're not approving, we're not asking you to approve a design. I mean, if council were to, were to want that alternative to be studied, we certainly can. It would not impact the land dedication that, that could occur at 10301 Burn. And if that's the input that you want, alternate B with, with the downhill bikes going there, that can happen too.
You know, this is question time, right? So I want to respect our process. I'd like to hear from the public, and then I'm, you know, happy to bring a motion after that for, to maybe us to widen our horizon just a bit and circle back with the BikePed Commission and make sure that we're doing something that they, you know, that they're on board with. But, but I'd like to hear from the public before we go there, right? Thanks.
Are there any more questions of staff before we go to the public?
Yeah, you had mentioned that an increased modified alternative B cost, do we have an idea of how much that cost increase would be?
Exactly.
I do not have that number available. I have not seen a number for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no other hand.
I think John has something, and he's on mute.
Oh, I don't see his hand raised.
John was talking, and we can't hear him. John, can you adjust your audio or something? We still can't.
John, we can't hear you. You're not muted, but we don't hear you.
Don't that.
No, we don't hear you. Well, while he's fixing his audio, or he could call in, we can go to the public and then come back to John. So we have two speakers versus Seema. Welcome, Seema.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, council members. Thank you for taking my call. So I think as Councilmember Sinks mentioned, there's a discrepancy here because the BikePed Commission said that they liked an alternative B where the downhill and the uphill bicyclists would be together next to the pedestrian walkway away from the cars. And I, you know, I looked at the Ashto guidelines, and they say that if you have 14 feet for a shared bike path, that's more than enough. They recommend, the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials recommended 12 to 14 feet wide if you have heavy use anticipated for multi-use trail for both pedestrians and bike cyclists. So I'm not entirely sure why we would need to go to 20 feet. So I'm not entirely sure why we would need to go to 20 feet as Roger is mentioning. But the more important thing is this was never studied. So we don't know that we need to go from 14 feet to 20 feet. We don't know necessarily how much cost it would add if we created a bike lane that was, and that was, you know, separated for downhill bicyclists as well as uphill bicyclists. And as a cyclist, I, I think that assumption that, oh, it's totally fine to send bicyclists careening downhill, mixing in with cars is, is what creates problems in the long run. And it'll be a lot cheaper. We have the land. We're going to be building. It's a lot cheaper for us to do it now, do it properly, keep the bikes away from the cars, both uphill and downhill versus going back in a few years when we are having problems and we have bicyclists and cars mixing with disastrous results and then trying to fix it and it costing us a lot more money. So let's take our time. Let's do it right. Thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you, Seema. Next, we have Alango Ganga. Welcome, Alango.
Yes, this is Alango Ganga. I'm a Bicycle Pedestrian Commissioner. And in this case, I'm speaking for myself, but I'll also speak as a commissioner, not, not as a, on behalf of the commission, but as a commissioner, because I participated in this discussion when, when this came to the commission in February. So number one is on the alternate B. See, alternate B, I think if you are spending $2.2 million to put this path, it makes sense to have a separate shared use path that can accommodate both pedestrians and bicyclists. And 14 feet is, you know, more than enough. I think I mentioned this also, like, you know, I've extensively studied the ASHTO guidelines. And, you know, 14 feet is more than enough for having a shared use path. It can be a class one shared use path, which can be safer for both bicyclists and pedestrians to share that. And to give you a perspective, you know, in Regno Creek Trail, the staff recommended eight feet, somewhere in the eight to 10 feet, which I at that time argued that, you know, it is much lower than, it should be used as an exception. And, you know, and then they were also projecting a lot more people to pass that path and this, they recommended it's safer. And then it's so counterintuitive to come here and then say that, you know, 14 feet is not sufficient to do a shared use path. Okay, I would like, I would like this to really come back, you know, you know, send it back to the Bicycle Commission so that they can really make a recommendation for the right, on a modified alternative. And I don't think that the cost should go up because of this. Then the second thing I would like to state is this, you know, the staff report says that this project is under tier three on the bicycle, 2016 bicycle plan and tier two under, you know, 2018, you know, pedestrian plan. And pedestrian plan, what recommended is actually a sidewalk project. And, and the, you know, the pedestrian and the bicycle plan actually recommended a shared use path for $47,000. So you can do a shared use path with proper mitigation measures in, because that's a really a low stress road. And it's a highly safe, 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 high safety rating as in the both bicycle plan and the pedestrian plans. So I would like to, you know, before we go and invest two to $3 million on this project, we really need to be putting that money elsewhere in the city where we can make the bicyclists and pedestrians safer. Because there's a lot of tier one projects where we want to really make, you know, where there is going to be a real impact. We can make a big, you know, impact for the bicyclists and pedestrians to really walk and bike safely in the city. And that's what we should be doing rather than, you know, getting into this project right now. Okay, and that's basically my, my recommendation here. And, and one last point is I would like to state that is in the staff report, you are making statements that, you know, Bicycle Commission endorsed it and things like that. Bicycle Commission did not endorse it. Basically, when you are, you know, specifically referring to motion, please use the, in verbatim what the motion was. Similarly, the Parks and Rec Commission also use in verbatim what they said. Both of them recommended the alternate B or the modified alternative B. But then we do not, you know, get into the endorsements or acceptance by the city council and the likes. So please use the exact wordings that, that we have. And as far as the recommendation today, I would say, you know, you know, you need to really be studying this further and then sending back to the commission. The best thing you can do it is just accept it. Do not go and endorse any of these options here.
Can I ask the speaker a question?
Sure.
Mayor?
Yes, of course.
Okay, so I'm reading the minutes from your 2020 meeting. And on this item, it states, besides alternatives, ADE presented. The substance states, commission recommending option B with both bikes and pedestrians dedicated to use. Can you elaborate on what that means? Is that basically the modified alternative B that you're describing here?
That's correct. So, so when you are, you know, there is a separate 14 feet path that is off a street. That's what is being recommended in the plans, right? So that one is 14 feet. So where they are showing eight feet for the pedestrian, pedestrians and like six feet for the bicyclists for one-way bicycle travel. So ideally for a 14 feet, you can have a center median with, you know, bicyclists and pedestrians sharing this path. And you can follow the ASHTO guidelines and do your shared use path where the bicyclists and pedestrians can use it both directions.
Okay, understood. I appreciate that clarification. I just want to make sure that what you guys were recommending was captured in the minutes here. It seems like it was. And I appreciate the work that you do and your commission is done. Thanks very much.
And I wanted to just provide a clarification that Gail actually did make a correction on that slide on the Bike Ped Commission recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, next we have Eric Lynn Scott. Welcome, Eric.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, city council members, members and city staff. Thanks for listening today. So obviously, this is a difficult problem with a lot of engineering difficulties. But yes, we, we were in favor of a path that would allow both bikes up and down and mixed with pedestrians. I don't recall we said that needed to be 19 feet wide. I do also think that 14 feet wide would be plenty here. I think, you know, our, our main concerns maybe was, you know, maybe, you know, the speed you might catch up as you go downhill. But of course, this design, and that wasn't clear in our meeting, I think, this has these ADA landings. And, you know, if you have those ADA landings, that makes a quite a different roadway. In fact, I'm a little bit questioning how the mechanics of this will work. You know, it's pretty steep here, so you're going to be biking up different, you know, slopes alternately. You know, how will that feel? The closest I can think of that you have, when comes across is when my bikes up the access ramps to various bridges in the cities. And of course, those are much more narrow and that doesn't, everything to be a problem. And they also have turns as well as landings. So I, I don't quite see why you couldn't, if you were able to make it up here, you know, I think you would, it would go down quite well. So, you know, maybe we should think about that, allow the downhill traffic also. Probably deserve some more studying. And I think also if we're going to spend this much money, we should make a path that has, you know, bicycle traffic both up and down.
All right. All right, thank you, Eric. We can bring it back to council. So just point out that whether you say the path is uphill only or, or both ways, cyclists will end up using it both ways. There's not going to be anything stopping them from doing so. And yeah, for, especially for inexperienced cyclists, they probably don't want to ride down that road along with the cars. So we can bring it back. Anyone else have any other comments? I kind of think that, you know, we're not really ready here. We need to go back and look at alternatives with the bikes going both ways.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I apologize. I was.
You have a letter?
I was intending to read a letter, yes.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
From J.R. Frum. Mayor Sharp and council members, under the current recommendation, alternative B, I'm concerned that by not separating cyclists riding downhill as well as uphill, we will create a situation where less experienced bike riders will have to mix with cars. Such a situation could make cyclists feel less safe and disincline them towards using bicycles to access Blackberry Farm. I therefore encourage you to approve a modified alternative B that cleaves to the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission's original, original recommendation, which included bike lanes running both uphill and downhill and next to the pedestrian walkway. I think this recommendation represents the safest of the alternative. Ensuring that cyclists feel safe here will encourage increased use of bicycles to access Blackberry Farm. Many thanks, J.R. Frum.
All right, thank you. So now we can bring it back to council. Let me go back. We have one. Oh, Rod, did you want to speak again or did I forget to lower your hand?
No, I, I was just waiting for, for public input. But, I mean, we did get a letter from, you know, people who have been our biggest advocates on bikes. And, and they're also asking for us to support our Bike Ped Commission. But I do think, right, staff, as you said, Mayor, I think staff has some legitimate points. My only disappointment is it's, it's been, I don't know, six, seven, eight months since they apparently met. If I saw correctly, it was February and we're still with this dissonance thing. And I, I'm assuming that if we, I, I would like to move this forward rather than go backward. But, but I would like the Bike Ped Commission to hear staff out on their concerns and see if we can find some alternatives. But I think among things worthy of studying as we go to the next phase, which is SEQA. Am I correct, Gail?
Yeah, we would need to do SEQA at such a time as we implement a project, new design and implement, or do something different with the.
Well, so, so before this needs to come back to council, I would go to SEQA with the following. Study in SEQA, alternative A, alternative B, and alternative B as, as suggested by, by the Bike Ped Commission and maybe B, alternative B with any prime that you all come up with, with the Bike Ped Commission that, you know, would, would satisfy everybody.
Yeah, I mean, if 14 feet isn't wide enough for the two-way, does it have to go all the way to 19? Or can it be 16 or something?
I mean, I don't think we have to design, design it here, right? I think this is, this is nitty gritty engineering, but just looking at B, it is a little confusing. So let's see, when I'm downhill, I have to stay to the left, which feels on, a bit unnatural. When I'm coming back, I stay on the left and I'm on this. And so, so, you know, we're, we're trying to do things, we ought to be trying to do things that are intuitive. And I understand there are landings, but I mean, it seems to me like maybe you could create a landing for pedestrians, but not for the bikes. I mean, who knows? I don't know. But I don't want to design it here at 11:25 at night.
So did I hear? And did I hear the start of a motion, maybe?
Are you looking for a motion or direction otherwise?
Yeah, let's do a motion, then we can have more discussion.
Oh, fine. So, so I would propose that we study in SEQA, that we, we study A, we study B. We study B as the Bike Ped Commission asked it, asked for this to be. And I'm open to, you know, B prime, prime if, if staff and Bike Ped Commission are able to come up with that. Something that's a derivative of B.
I think it sounded like the Parks and Rec Commission also liked the B modified, but I'm not.
I don't know, but yeah, I think it, it deserves to come back to both of those committees. And, and I just asked staff, right, to really go through it so we can seem to, so we can see if we can get to a consensus, probably on something that looks somewhat like B, but probably puts the bike lanes together in something that.
So was that a motion that needs a second before we bring it back to?
Sure.
I'll second that. And now we can bring it back for discussion. John has his hand up.
But as a reminder, we're not, we're not doing SEQA after the action is taken tonight. That, that'll happen at a, at a subsequent action when you do something with Burn or you decide on an alternative. I mean, for now, if, if you were just to endorse either, you know, an alternate B or a B modified, that would accommodate two, two lanes of bike traffic as the Bike and Ped Commission had recommended. That, that would be adequate for us.
Okay, so I, I like the idea of trying to get both of the bike lanes together like people might expect if they were traveling on this thing.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the only other thing, right, is you do the conventional bikes going the same direction as traffic, but on the right-hand side in all cases, right? Which looks like one of your other alternatives. But then you'd probably want to have some protection or whatever. I don't know. I just feel like trying to engineer this thing at, at this hour at this council meeting is probably the wrong thing to do. But if you need something specific, I would go with, you know, a B modified is our first preference and.
Yep, that's, and that works. Yeah, that works. And we'll go back to those commissions and get input.
Okay, John, you wanted to speak. Go ahead. Can he speak yet?
Yeah.
Good. So could you put the B view back up? That's where my question is. Maybe kind of a minor point, but I think it's worth asking. There you go. Why on the automobile area there? Yeah, thanks for blowing it up. The shared lane is only 10 feet, but the car going uphill gets a full 11. Why are we squishing the bike while giving the uphill car? What's the reasoning behind that?
We, we have the engineer that developed this cross-section as a participant. Maybe Matt, are you, are you listening to where you could, you could answer the council, Councilman Willie's question?
I am.
Available, yes.
Yeah, just introduce yourself, Matt, and then, then please, please answer that.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, Matt Comcar with Underwood and Rosenblum Civil Engineers. The reason for that is that on the uphill side, you have a rock wall. And so additional distance from that rock wall is necessary, that one extra foot for the uphill lane is why it gets 11 feet. On the downhill side, there is no rock wall. There is a sense.
And pardon me, Matt, I, I think another consideration is the cyclist going uphill. Of course, they're, they're likely going to be going slower than the cars. So it would allow cars more room to get past the, the cyclist if, if cyclist chose to be on that lane versus using the separated path.
That, that's also a great point, you know. I'm assuming that alternative B was built and the uphill cyclists will respect, you know, the signage. But if they don't, then you're absolutely right. Then one extra foot can protect them.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, you, okay, let me go back to the panelists. Okay, Leon, go ahead.
Hi, can I clarify? Residents want to know, how much did we pay for the property next to the path? Because it's not mentioned in the staff report.
You're asking. Okay, go, go ahead, Gail.
Yes, that, that purchase was approved for 2.45 million.
2.45 million and like two, three years ago. That was in?
2017. It was 2017.
Yeah, could, could you please include such things in the staff report for completeness? And also the staff report did say Bike Ped Commission endorsed the alternative B without saying the specific. It would be good to be more accurate. And, yeah.
That, that was, that was, that's why I clarified. That, that was written in error. It wasn't intended to, to mislead anyone. That's why I asked you all to clarify it this evening.
Yeah, it's better to correct, correct it in the staff report, the written report also that, so people know. And also, so this was contracted out, right? So how come the consultant studied five options, five? And none of them seems to be acceptable. And here we have to engineer it. The Bike Ped Commission didn't like it. So how come, is it possible that this kind of alternatives are brought to the Bike Ped Commission early? So how come, is it possible that this kind of altern- alternatives are brought to the Bike Ped Commission earlier before the report is finalized, so that we at least have one option that's well-studied? And we don't have to engineer this because we're, this is second time I've, there, there, Rignot Creek Trail feasibility study also studied, I think, five options at the end. None of those options were feasible. We had to totally do something else. So the, the option that we are using now wasn't studied at all. So this is happening again. That means some, we need to somehow bring more, bring our commissions in earlier so that we don't only bring them in at the end. So is that possible to discuss alternatives uh, uh, with the consultant before they spend a lot of time studying each in detail?
But it, no, yes, it is. It certainly is.
Okay, yeah, I think uh what Bike Pet uh Elango is saying also makes sense that with fourteen feet, it should be able to support both uh two-way bicycles and pedestrians, so that would make sense. And I was looking at the staff report from Parks, Rec Commission because I asked the three Park, Parks and Rec Commission today. They were all pretty confused by the funding for the project. They thought the project is already funded. Then I find out, oh, in that staff report, it says there is no physical impact because the project is funded. And then I find out in the council's virgin, there is more detail. The funding is only for feasibility study. So I think it's in, it's important because Bike Pet Commission doesn't attend every council meeting, so they really don't know what the council has done, what the council has funded or not. It's helpful for them to understand. So one Bike Pet Commission told me that she thought the two point two million dollars was to purchase the property next to the pass. So apparently somehow they are confused by the project. They are asking me, they want to, it go back to their commission so they can take a look again because they were uh confused on what they are supposed to do.
Okay, um, Councilmember Chow, do you have any comments on the actual proposal?
Ahead of you, there, there's been a motion made and then a second.
Yeah, so I agree that it should be um, be modified with the bi-direction pass on the fourteen feet wide.
Okay, great.
Okay.
I have a question. If we do CEQA, does that need additional funding?
Well, that, that'll be done um with whatever project council may authorize in the future, that funding. It's, we're not asking for funding.
Not now.
Okay, because I did got comment from residents that this is a tier two and tier three in both bike and pedestrian plan. Although it's really, really nice to be able to widen the entrance to Blackberry Farm. But while the city has a lot of other higher priorities, accident-prone areas to improve, and we are in a more financial bind right now, so they are asking us to um not fund the project uh at this time.
And we're not, and we're not asking that. It'll, it'll be up to council and, you know, at any time they may like, or as soon as the next CIP cycle, if they want to fund this project.
Right. Okay, so there's a motion and there was a second. Uh, if there's no further.
Can we just clarify what the motion was?
Oh, sure, um.
Is it, is it A, B, and the modified B, or just modified B?
Yeah, Rod, can you repeat? I think it was to study A, B, and modified B, if I remember. That was hours ago.
But I, I, it, it seemed like Public Works was asking us to get more specific, so um, can, can staff help a little bit here? I mean, I know in the end we make the motions, but is it too fuzzy to give you A, B, and modified B?
I, I think if, if it would be like alternate B, you know, with, with uh, with an amendment that it be able to uh, that it could accommodate both directions of bicycle traffic. That, that would be.
In the same, in the same.
Yeah, or, you know, or.
Right, in the same path, not.
We don't know.
Uh, or, yeah, because right now it's currently fourteen feet, or if uh, because the only thing we, we, we do need to verify that.
So, I mean, what, what I got from all of this is we have Bike Ped Commission wanting that and bicycle advocates that we've heard from tonight wanting that versus staff saying, well, actually, you know, maybe that's difficult, or it'd take out a lot of trees, but we haven't studied it. I would like that issue resolved, so maybe I could just make it B and B prime. Or something that looks like it.
Yeah, I, I think for the, for the purposes of where we are now and what we're asking, that, that would be fine.
Is that okay?
Yes.
To clarify, so what we want is to separate the bike and pedestrian from vehicle traffic, right? That's, we hope.
Yeah, I, I think ideally we would do something, I mean, just my idea here, but it would probably follows the Bike Ped Commission. You do something that's intuitive for, for bi- cyclists. Maybe it takes the, you know, the rightmost uh track um on a, on a dedicated pathway so that the, you know, the downhill cyclists are furthest from the pedestrians. Who knows? And then maybe there's some separation or something to, to keep the bikes from colliding with the pedestrians. Maybe we can figure out how to make it a little narrower, I don't know. And then, yeah, I think there are going to be cyclists, experienced cyclists that are going to say, heck, no, I'm just going down the same route as the cars, and you can't prevent that, obviously. Um, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I think what, you know, the, the assessment that's not been done for that alternative is how much does it cost? And it's going to be considerably wider, and what's the tree impact? And so we ought to get that information.
And, and that'll all be produced, so it'd be.
You know, ideally, right, we would circle back around with Bike Pet and Parks and Rec, and we'd say, okay, here's the new consensus, and it looks sort of like B prime, but we tweaked it a little bit. So there's no landing for the downhill cyclists or whatever. I don't want to get any more specific.
So if you just stick with B and B prime, and there's a se- is there a second for that? Is the mayor accept the modified motion?
Right, yeah, I'll accept it, and I'll second it if I, we still need another second, and we can vote on it with no more discussion.
Uh, Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so for um item twelve, I am going to recuse myself um due to a potential conflict of interest on to, out of an abundance of caution, so I will um turn off my screen, and Darcy, you can take over for item twelve.
Great, um, okay, item twelve is an urgency ordinance temporarily waiving permit fees for certain temporary commercial signs and banners.
Uh, didn't we skip number, item number twelve is resolution amending the City Council Conflict of Interest Code?
Am I reading the wrong addendum?
Actually, that was, it is the urgency ordinance.
Did we reorder?
No. Um.
Okay, I'm sorry, keep going.
Okay, so uh I will um continue from what I was stating previously, unmodified, and if staff could please provide us a report?
Yes, uh, yes, Vice, Vice Mayor Paul, uh Ben Food, Director of Development with me tonight is Angela Suede, Economic Development Manager. Angela has a very short and brief presentation for you. Uh, with that, Angela, why don't you go ahead with your presentation?
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, Angela Sway, Economic Development Manager. The goal of this ordinance is to provide financial relief to our local businesses by waiving the three hundred eighty-four dollar permitting fee uh to enable them to advertise their businesses on commercial buildings. So here, uh currently, our sign ordinance in the Muni code provides, allows for temporary commercial signs to be um mounted on commercial buildings, um and there is a charge of three hundred eighty-four dollars. This ordinance will temporarily waive that permitting fee. Under this ordinance, um, just as other um permits and applications, uh, the per- the application can be approved, conditionally approved, or denied by the director of CDD, uh, the application fee will be waived. Uh, it is non-transferable, and then all current requirements and guidelines remain the same under the current Muni code. No sustained sustainability impact. And the fiscal impact, um, it would be minimal. There, we would be losing the individual three hundred eighty-four dollar permitting fees. However, we uh anticipate the fee waivers will be offset by sales tax revenue generated by operating businesses. So this evening, we are um asking council uh to find the proposed action exempt from CEQA to enact the urgency, excuse me, ordinance, and then um please note that the urgency ordinance must be adopted by at least four-fifths of uh the City Council. And that, um, and we can answer any questions.
Okay, so all four of us sitting now would need to uh vote for it, it seems.
That's correct.
Okay, great, thanks, thanks, Angela. So are there any questions from council? Uh, I see Councilmember Chow has her hand up. Please proceed.
Oh, yeah, I support waiving the fees, but I'd like to understand the, why are we charging three hundred and eighty-four dollars for just putting on a banner? And, uh, what cost is there to the city for people to put on banners?
Sure, I can answer that, uh, Council, Councilmember Chow. Uh, our three eighty-four uh dollar fee is based on cost recovery, as you may be aware, all of our fees are cost recovery. So anytime uh an applicant or operator want to come in and file for a per- permit, we have staff that review these permits with them and um identifying the script footage and also just the requirements with these banners and signs may be uh depending on the, the level of submittal, it could be over counter permit, uh, or it could take a number of different discussions and reviews. And so the three hundred eighty-four has been uh the fee that we had um uh calculated to uh to support uh costs, costs uh recovery.
So then that means, and when we waive the fees now, the staff still need to go through the same process?
Correct.
Hmm, to review all this and then that three hundred eighty-four will be there on form by the city still?
Yeah, this is really in line with um our outdoor, like our outdoor dining. We still require permits so we can verify the layouts. Um, but we don't charge them. We're kind of doing the same thing to make it easier. We're kind of expediting that permit process.
We are sort of absorbing the cost with extra staff work.
Yeah, but it, it lines up with it, and we expedite.
We need extra staff uh consultant to, I mean, would there be extra fee for expense for the city because we need extra staff, or we would, we would absorb it on?
No, we.
And staff.
No, so, sorry to cut you off, Councilmember Chow, we, we do not require additional staff or coun- or consultants for this effort. It would just be our standard review prac- practice. What we are been doing, we've been doing under COVID nineteen is um with Angela's assistance and leadership, is kind of reach out to the, to uh business community, so we're conducting a little more outreach and utilizing the chamber to kind of help us get the message out. So hopefully that will reduce the amount of time that staff had to spend on these kind of applications.
Okay, great.
Great, any other questions from council? Seeing none, I'll go to the public. We have uh Mooney, Mad Padler from uh the public to, to speak. Um, welcome, and you have three minutes.
So, hey, uh, Vice Mayor, Darcy, and uh, so the council members. So I have a question, and then I also have a comment. The, the question is, what prompted this? Like, so what, why are we having this conversation today? And second, the comment is, I do believe, you know, we should uh allow small businesses to succeed by not charging them and all that. Now, I understand, you know, not everybody that has signs, you know, uh, have applied and, you know, got permits and, you know, paid fees. We want to burden the small businesses any more than, you know, they are already suffering, so I want us to be, you know, uh, business friendly, especially on the small business side. Um, I like the idea of, you know, us reviewing, uh, having a method to madness, because we don't want things getting out of control where, you know, some crazy banner appears, you know, in some wrong places and all that. So, so I, I like the idea of, you know, method to madness and, you know, us uh having a process and approving it, and also I like the idea of not charging them because, you know, it would be, cause an additional burden. But I do have a question, you know, why did this come to this uh discussion today? I don't know if you can answer that.
Very great, thank you, Mooney. Um, seeing no other hands up, can staff uh address the residents' question regarding how this came about?
Sure, I can do that. Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, similar to the other two uh emergency orders that, well, one has been uh re- approved by council some months ago, early in the summer, as well as the next item coming up, we, the city's been looking at ways to kind of assist the uh business community. It's been particularly difficult for the, for the retail and business community. Um, and this is one of the, the things that we've been hearing from that community uh through our economic development outreach efforts, um, that looking for some kind of monetary relief. Uh, I think anything helps, and three ninety-four dollars for, for banner at the current situation pandemic, uh, is a burden. So that's, that's how this came about.
Okay, great. Well, glad that you're looking out for our business community and making sure that we're not being um either pragmatic or, or unkind, uh, and, and considerate. So um, are there any other uh comments from council before we entertain a motion? No? Okay, would anyone like to bring a motion? If not, I'll go ahead and move that the City Council find that the proposed actions are exempt from CEQA. Um, and uh, second, that we conduct the only reading and enact urgency ordinance. Uh, and if I could get a number from the city clerk, or the ordinance number?
It's two zero dash two two one one.
Thank you. Uh, number two zero dash two two one one. An urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino temporarily waiving permit fees for certain temporary commercial signs and banners. Um, I will make an omnibus motion that'd be read by title only. I'll ask the city clerk to conduct that first reading after my motion, paragrah, or vote, and I would like to finally move that the ordinance um, whose number was cited previously uh be enacted. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Okay, uh, Madam City Clerk, if you would, please conduct the first and only reading of this urgency ordinance.
This is the only reading and enactment of urgency ordinance number two zero dash two two one one, an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino temporarily waiving permit fees for certain temporary commercial signs and banners.
Thank you very much, and Madam City Clerk, if you would, please conduct a roll call vote.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye, thank you very much.
Motion carries with Sharp abstaining.
Excellent, and so we're on to item thirteen, uh, and we'll bring back the mayor for item number thirteen. Um, so we're about ten minutes to midnight. Uh, does anybody want to take a, a quick break uh before we go to our final two items? Nope, hearing none. Steve, are you back? I guess I could take on the rest of it. All right, let's do this. Uh, we'll, uh, we'll go forward, and uh when, when Steve reappears in front of the black and white Apple spaceship background, we'll uh, we'll push it over to him. So item number thirteen is an emergency order authorizing the outdoor operations of qualifying establishments for retail uses, personal care services uses, and gym and fitness facilities pursuant to a special temporary outdoor operations permit. And maybe we, please have the staff report for that.
Sure, Vice, go ahead.
Do it, you go ahead, Ben.
Oh, no, please, I was going to bring up Angela, but, but please.
I was just going to hit it off at the pass as a reminder to council, this was the emergency order I put in place a couple of weeks ago to basically enable personal care services outdoors, similar to outdoor dining. Um, and that's kind of it, in line with the um, in county order. So you're just confirming my emergency order from two weeks ago?
Okay, excellent. Are there any questions, uh, for staff from council? I don't see any raised hands. I will go to the public. I see a member of the public, Anjali Kausar. Uh, welcome, Anjali. Uh, you'll have three minutes to provide your comment. And, uh, please feel free to begin at any time.
Um, good evening, mayor and council members. I just, on behalf, I'm Anjali Kausar with the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce. Um, on behalf of our small businesses, I just wanted to thank you all for approving item number twelve and also, you know, reapproving the, item number thirteen that the city manager had put into ordinance for us, uh, a few weeks ago. So just wanted to thank you all for supporting our local businesses.
Great. Um, thank you, Anjali, and thank you for being succinct. Uh, we are back to council. Are there any comments prior to entertaining a motion on this emergency order? Would anyone like to bring the motion? Okay, um, then I will move that we ratify the emergency order authorizing the outdoor operations of qualifying establishments, um, as recited pursuant to our temporary outdoors, uh, outdoor operations permit. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great. Um, so, uh, I'm sorry, John, did you want, uh, Liang to a second or?
Either one, she is fine, yep.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, council member, uh, Chow seconds. Um, if there's no further discussion, I will ask our city clerk to conduct a roll call vote.
Council member Chow?
Aye.
Council member Sinks?
Aye.
Council member Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
And I do not see Mayor Sharp.
I tried to call him and he's not, he's not picking up, so.
Okay, so the motion carries with Sharp absent.
Well, we might just be pleasantly surprising him at the very brisk clip at which we're going through the rest of the agenda.
I'm after the tone.
Ex- exactly.
Okay, so let's go on to item number fourteen. This is a resolution amending the city of Cupertino conflict of interest code for officials and designated employees and requiring electronic filing of all statements of economic interest, uh, also known as the Form seven hundreds, uh, as well as the twenty twenty local agency biennial notice. Uh, may we have the staff report for this item?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor. I will pull up my presentation. Okay, this, uh, just quickly, a conflict of interest code is, tells people, uh, public officials, designated employees and consultants what they need to report on their statement of economic interest, Form seven hundred. And, um, agencies are required by the political reform, reform act to adopt and maintain their own codes. A code, a code, uh, must list the positions involved in agency decisions in which the official may have a private financial interest. It must ensure disclosure of all potential conflict situations, as well as narrowly tailor the disclosure requirements to differentiate between designated employees and with different powers and responsibilities. The information is, in a code is complex and may change over time. So agencies must review their codes every two years and amend when necessary. The city manager reports whether any amendments are needed and the council is the code reviewing body for adoption. So the draft resolution makes clarifying amendment to the city's conflict code and requires electronic filing of all Form seven hundreds. The local agency biennial notice is consistent with FPPC regulations. It verifies review by the council and any amendments being applied to the code. An amendment is necessary this year first to update the disclosure categories to track the types of economic interests to be reported. This assigns disclosure categories based on specific duties and responsibilities. This change is consistent with state law and the approach that's being taken by other cities, including the city of Palo Alto, which was, um, the starting point. Their model was the starting point for this template. So our current code, uh, at left is organized by four disclosure groups and based on the positions. The eighty-seven, two hundred filers file all schedules. And then there are the commissions and the designated employee groups. For clarity, the draft code on the right has been updated with six revised disclosure groups that are closely based on their roles of making recommendations and are influencing governmental decisions. For example, most commissions have the same reporting requirements, but the scope of their recommendations vary. The Fine Arts Commission does not make the same types of recommendations as the Parks and Recreation or Housing Commissions. So the groups are broken out into more tailored disclosure requirements and based upon the range of their recommendations. Another change is the list of designated positions has been updated and organized by heading for each department and subheadings for each division. Positions in categories six, five and six must disclose interests related to the entire department, not just the division. And further amendments include adding and deleting various positions and updating position titles to accurate, accurately reflect the current structure of our organization as listed in the staff report. Finally, uh, requiring one hundred percent e-filing of Form seven hundreds. The city clerk's office currently accepts both paper and electronic filings. In twenty nineteen, ninety-nine percent of all filers already use the e-file option and a hundred percent compliance would provide a more accessible and consistent format. So your recommended action for tonight is to adopt the draft resolution, which rescinds the previous code and adopts the proposed amendments, as well as requiring electronic filing of Form seven hundreds and authorize the city manager to sign the required twenty twenty local agency biennial notice. And that concludes my presentation, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much, Kirsten. And, uh, just for the benefit of anyone that might still be, uh, viewing this, uh, there are exhibits to the, um, to, to the item in our, uh, you know, in our agenda. Um, I think if you were sharing your screen, um, we, we didn't actually see it. But if there are no questions from the council, I, I think people, you know, followed what you were saying. I don't see any hands up. I also don't see any attendees that are looking to, um, uh, speak on the item. And so I'll just bring it back and ask if there are any, uh, comments prior to entertaining a motion on this item. Uh, seeing and hearing none, uh, would anyone like to bring forward, uh, the motion for item number fourteen? Okay, uh, same, then I will move that we adopt resolution number twenty dash one fifteen, rescinding, rescinding, rather, resolution number eighteen dash oh nine two and amending the city of Cupertino conflict of interest code for officials and designated employees and requiring electronic filing of all statements of economic interest and be authorizing the city manager to sign the required twenty twenty local agency biennial notice. May I please have a second for that motion?
Second. This is Rod.
Yeah, council member Sinks seconds. And, uh, barring any further discussion, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Council member Chow?
Aye.
Council member Sinks?
Aye.
Council member Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Is Mayor Sharp back? Okay, so the motion carries with Sharp absent.
Uh, excellent, so, um.
Way to go, Darcy.
Yeah.
Way to move this. Thank you.
So, um, I will adjourn, uh, this meeting, um, until our next regularly scheduled council meeting, um, at the, uh, first Tuesday in October. Uh, we do have, uh, a, or another special meeting. I, I'd like to consult with, uh, staff as to how we would like to convene this. Do we need to exit out of this? Or should we just really reconvene?
But if, um, Mr. Vice Mayor, you, you can just go ahead and, and call the special Cupertino Public Facilities Corporation meeting to order now.
Okay, excellent. Then I will do.
We, don't we usually have, uh, council comments at the end or that, would that come after the special, special meeting?
Oh, you know, that's a good point. Thank you very much. I, I did skip the council and staff comments for future agenda items. Um, a- and so I will reopen, uh, the regularly scheduled meeting, um, having not actually opened the, the following one yet. Uh, and I'll call for any, uh, council and staff comments. Uh, let, let's first ask Deb, do you have uh, comments, Deb, to wrap up our regularly scheduled meeting?
Um, I do not at this time. I would request, um, for council, just because we're really late to, um, you know, limit their comments about new agenda items and such, we'll catch up. There's just, we have a lot of stuff we're working on.
Absolutely. I'd be more than happy to set people on a timer of three minutes.
Excellent, that would be great.
We'll extend the same courtesy we do to the public. Would anyone on council like to, um, li- like to make comments at this point? No? Oh, excellent. All right, well, um.
Hold on, I think John would, but his audio is funny again.
Oh, no. Okay, uh.
So, uh, yeah, I'll try and be, uh, pretty brief. So back, uh, at the beginning of the meeting with the, uh, COVID, uh, update, uh, in talking with a, a resident and he had an idea. It's something that I'd like to put out that, uh, I think is worth serious, uh, consideration. And he's concerned about the homeless also. And not just moving them around, but trying to make it so that they can start to move out of being homeless. And so he was suggesting that we look at, uh, offering some type of, uh, employment, um, landscaping or things of that nature that, uh, we could offer them. And the, the reason I feel so, so, uh, passionate about this is he said he would actually be willing to pay to sponsor a homeless person while they're on, you know, city's, uh, work program. And I think that it goes beyond that one resident. I think, um, more of us would be willing to, to chip in to, uh, provide an avenue for the homeless. There probably a, a lot of the homeless are, are perhaps not interested, but let's not miss the ones that might be. So I'd like to propose that the, uh, city manager have that looked into. I actually went, uh, on the internet after talking with him and San Diego has a program for, uh, assisting the, uh, homeless. Um, i- its name is something Wheels and something. And so there's another avenue to explore and make this, you know, maybe a study session, maybe an agenda item, depending on if you feel there's something that, um, uh, really could be done by the city, bring us a, an agenda item. Or if you're not quite sure, bring it back as a, uh, study session. So I'll leave it at that. Anybody, uh, wanna voice in, bow me?
Great, thank you, John.
So do you want to second or something?
Well, if you like to support, I think, um, that would be.
Yeah, I would support that. And, uh, also I think, uh, a public commented, uh, whether the city could offer some kind of type of work or help and find work. I don't know whether some of them are, have specific skills, um, or are there nonprofits that's helping them to connect, uh?
So I'll, I'll take a look at what we can, I'll take a little looky, what we can do, but what council member Chow started to talk about was really the, it's gonna sound bad the way I say it, but it's really the job of other agencies and nonprofits to help them find work. But I'm, I'm happy to look at what the possibilities are.
Well, if, if I can, I did just find the article that I printed out. New program puts San Diego's homeless to work. It's called Wheels for Change Program. And so while, while we might think it is up to some other agency, I, I think that it's definitely worth looking at.
No, I can, I can pull the article myself now that you give me the ni- the name. That's good.
So just type in, you know, uh, Wheels of Change, San Diego, and you'll get a whole bunch of hits for it.
Yeah, it's just, our situation would be different from San Diego because they have their own social services and we rely on the county, so.
And let's keep this to just brief direction to staff at this point.
So, um, for me, I think I'd like to propose that we have a senior. I was, um, proposing to Deb maybe have a senior roundtable or, because it's brought to our attention, I think you, the other council members have received email about, uh, a senior, uh, who is trying, actually, I didn't know there are case service workers in our senior center providing services. I think, yeah, but then the scope of services we are able to provide with limited staffing we have is limited. But there are some people who do need extra support in making appointment with doctors and who are, who have need to, um, help with speak, because they are only speaking Mandarin or, or other languages. So there is certain gap between what the city can provide with the limited resources we have. However, we also have other community members, churches, who are looking for things that they can contribute. So I'm wondering, maybe we can have a roundtable to bridge the gap. What people need, what we can provide and what other nonprofits can fill in, similar to the homeless situation. There are other things out there, but people may not know. And also even the si- the services city provide, we don't, I didn't even know.
This is for short, this is for short agenda items, council member Chow, so I got.
So I hope to have an update of the services the city do provide for, um, seniors. And then I hope to have, uh, roundtable to connect the needs and the providers and find out to help bridge the gap.
I would implore that we have a lot of committees and roundtables going on and that you may be duplicating the efforts of the senior, what's it called, the senior? There's a senior council of volunteers and seniors at the senior center that is a little bit defunct right now and that you should re-stand that one up.
Yeah, I mean, there's the age friendly, um, you know, Cupertino, uh, committee as well as the.
Yeah, that you can connect in with, right? We don't have to recreate, uh.
Yeah, so just we need to have something that bring everyone to the table that's really find out what people need, especially now probably people need different things than, than normal times. Yeah, okay. I didn't know that's defunct. I thought they are still meeting. But then the reason is also many people don't know, uh, what the senior center even can provide. So that committee only reach out to the members, but then there are many people who are not members.
Yeah, I don't exactly agree with that. They reach out a lot, uh, to members that are not, you know, part of the senior center. But I, I get, I get it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, Rod, is there anything that you'd like to share at the end of our regular meeting here?
No, sir.
Okay, excellent.
I'm ready to go.
Sorry, so part of my, hmm, agenda is to get an update of the senior services we provide because I know Deb is trying to, um, clean, clean that, clarify that, right?
Well, let me, let me help you out here and, uh, state that, y- you know, by municipal code, uh, members of council are able to ask for information directly from staff members. Um, I'm sure the city attorney as well as the city manager can, you know, direct you to the applicable code. So, um, you know, hopefully that, that, that empowers you to seek the information you're looking for. But at this point, I'm gonna adjourn the regular meeting. Um, and we do have a call for a special meeting of the Cupertino Public Facilities Corporation. Um, we meet intermittently and by intermittently, um, I think one example is that on our, on our agenda is the approval of the April seventeenth, two thousand and twelve Public Facility Corporations Minutes, which is actually, uh, agenda item one. But before we do that, um, Madam City Clerk, if you could please conduct the roll call for this special meeting.
Board member Chow?
Here.
Board member Sinks?
Yes.
Board member Willie?
Here.
Vice Chair Paul?
Here. Okay, so I. Here. Okay, so I read consent calendar item number one. There are three and they're all to approve past Public Facilities Corporation Minutes. May I have an emotion from one of my fellow council members on consent items one through three?
I would like to move consent items one through three.
Great, anyone second?
I'll second. And I'm sorry, I didn't know the other item was done, so I didn't come back.
Welcome back.
We flew through the rest of it. Darcy was great.
Good, thank you. No, 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 just continue. You're in the middle of it.
All right, so barring no discussion, we're seeing no discussion. Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Board Member Chow?
Yeah, hi.
Board Member Sinks?
Yes.
Board Member Willie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Paul?
Aye.
Chair Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great. And just in time for the very last item, Mayor Sharp, I'll give the meeting back to you.
Okay, great. Let me go back. Let's see. So we're adjourning the special meeting, right?
Oh, no, we, we.
Oh, where are we in the special meeting? I'm sorry.
Item four.
Consent calendar. Okay, great. So now we're on to ordinances and action items. Authorizing the execution and delivery of documents relating to the sale and delivery of the city of Cupertino's 2028 certificates of participation, certificates to refinance the city's outstanding certificates of participation, 2012 refinancing project, 2012 certificates or refunded certificates for debt service savings and authoring related actions. So do we need another staff report here since we've already had this earlier? I'm not sure.
The staff report would be, would be the exact same.
Right, okay, very good. So therefore, can I have a, well, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number two zero dash zero one of the Board of Directors of the Cupertino Public Facilities Corporation, authorizing the execution and delivery of documents relating to the sale and delivery of 2028 certificates of participation in a principal amount not to exceed twenty-seven million dollars and authorizing and directing certain actions in connection therewith.
Oh, second.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, we need a vote. Kirsten, can you conduct a vote?
Board Member Chow?
Aye.
Board Member Sinks?
Aye.
Board Member Willie?
Aye.
Vice Chair Paul?
Aye.
Chair Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, so I can adjourn this meeting? Let me see. Am I, is that it then?
Have a good night.
Well, it's only twelve sixteen.
Oh, wait.
We were supposed to adjourn at twelve ten. Wow.
We're meeting on time.
Oh, thank you, Darcy. I think you should be mayor. Thank you.
Right, need to curse me.
See you later.
Bye.
Bye.